The Board of Selectmen are returning to open session on Tuesday evening, December 15th, 2020. I'd just like to read the following statement again. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts State on March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at this time in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting, could you please identify yourself by using the raise hand function or by unmeeting yourself and informing the meeting that you are recording? Okay, seeing none, before we get into the business of the town, we were notified shortly before this meeting that the renewal of the municipal solid waste disposal agreement with CMAS is still under consideration, and therefore that will not be discussed as part of tonight's meeting. I would also like to point out that this meeting and going forward, all future meetings by the Town of Hingham have now been enabled a feature called Live Transcript. Live Transcript is a button that is now active at the very bottom of all of your screens. And for those who are hearing impaired or who wish to be able to see a transcript of the meeting, you will see a recording, you will see a documentation of what's being said. What we have doing and what we are enabling right now is a temporary solution to something that we as a board and as a town want to pay more attention to as we go forward, and that is making sure that our meetings and all communications in our meetings, whether they be held in person or remotely, are accessible to as many citizens as possible. I would like to thank the Commission on Disabilities and specifically one of our new members, Megan Baker, for bringing this opportunity to the town's attention. Again, we recognize that this temporary solution is not ideal, but we are committed to working with the Commission and with staff to improve the accessibility of all meetings. We have enabled this for all public meetings, and the Chairs of all of the respective meetings and the staff who provide technology support during said meetings will also be informed of this feature over the next few days. So we hope that people find that useful. The first order of business on our agenda is a possible vote, and that is a vote to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Sixth Amendment of a lease agreement with Vista Verde Corporation for the restaurant at South Shore Country Club. That was the purpose of the Board's executive session that began at 6:30. Tom, may I just ask you for the benefit of the audience to just summarize the modifications to the lease that the Board will be voting on momentarily?
Sure. So this is a new amendment to the lease that had been extended several months ago with the restaurant at the South Shore Country Club that works under DBA and corporate title of Vista Verde, Inc. They are, we want to make sure that, I believe, that they're able to operate long term. They're such good partners at the country club. So in that light, in recognizing that due to the pandemic there, as with many restaurants, it's very difficult to keep a customer base coming in and out of the facility over there, given our new restrictions. So to that end, I think what we're doing here is extending the benefit that was provided them a couple of months ago for an additional six months, which is basically to lower their required rent of the facility to be in keeping with the actual per formula determined in the lease, per the actual realized profits during any given month. So that's the intent, that's the purpose, that's the general concept.
And I would just note that the ongoing operation of the Greenside Grill is critical to the viability of the South Shore Country Club. And also Vista Verde Corporation not only runs the Greenside Grill, but they also own Raphael's. And given all of the restrictions due to the pandemic, the banquet facilities have been significantly underutilized. I would also note that in this agreement that Vista Verde Corporation has committed that they will pursue any and all opportunities for any additional funding that could come their way should Congress pass additional legislation for which they would be eligible. Joe, any comments or questions?
No, I've reviewed the amendment. I'm satisfied. I think this is an important move to make sure that Vista Verde continues and adjusting the rent so it's a percentage of their gross sales makes sense in this environment. And I thank the Committee for all their work in putting this together.
Bill?
Nothing further, Mary. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have a question or wish to make a comment before the Board takes a vote? Okay, seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'd take a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Sixth Amendment of lease agreement with Vista Verde Corp. for the restaurant at South Shore Country Club.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks to Kevin Whalen, to Christine Smith, to Bill Friend, and the rest of the Country Club Management Committee for their assistance on this matter. The next item of business on the Board's agenda is the consideration of a lease agreement with the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Boston to use the former St. Jerome School in Weymouth. We thank and welcome Superintendent of Schools Dr. Paul Austin, Chair of the School Committee Carrie Nie, Director of Business Services John Ferris, School Committee Member Michelle Ayer. I apologize if I'm missing any other school committee members. I'm not seeing any on the list. Dr. Austin, perhaps I just ask you, I know that you've talked about this in school committee meetings, but sometimes we don't always have the same sort of audience overlap. So perhaps if you could just summarize what this lease agreement entails and how it will support your efforts to bring more students back to school.
Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for having us tonight, and thank you for the invite to speak. You know, it's in front of you tonight. So as we have been dealing with this pandemic across the district and some of the conditions that are required of us in order to provide quality education to our students, we ran into some pretty significant space issues at Foster Elementary. And particularly, we have eight classrooms within Foster that do not have windows, so adequate ventilation was difficult in those areas. So those classrooms had to be redeployed in other parts of the building, which really crowded Foster. And so in our search for space and thinking about how we can continue to build momentum to hopefully bring students back more in person and more students back in person in the very, very near future, we really needed the space. So we began to look around for in the region of what might be available. And thanks to our John Ferris, he did locate St. Jerome's right over the Weymouth, on the Weymouth line, I'm hanging line, the Hainway Weymouth line, that was utilized to the school up to last year and is now vacant. And so we have contacted them, spoke with them at length toward the facility, and really believe it will enable us to have the space needed to provide education to our students in a quality environment and as well as provide us an opportunity to move forward to bringing more in-person opportunities for students. That is a long-term goal, and that certainly allows us to do that. We're very excited for that opportunity.
Yeah. And Dr. Austin, the lease that the Board is selecting actually runs from December of 2020 till July 31st. My understanding from school committee meetings would be that if this license was signed, that the building would be in service beginning January 4th. Is that still the plan?
That is, we'll be ready. I mean, what we're hoping for, certainly the initial plan, sorry, that the initial plan we had was June 5th anyway, four, sorry. And we do have some work to do to get that ready. Given the holiday season right now will be a little bit more delayed than the 4th, but certainly no later than February 1st to have it up and running and students inside is now the plan. But we will begin work as soon as we get the keys, we'll begin work to make that transition. And I would anticipate after that January 4, 5, 6 area, begin to make the move over and getting supplies in place.
Yeah. And I would just mention that, you know, as of right now, we still, we have not heard about any sort of extension of the CARES Act or any sort of supplemental funds. So I do think it's worth noting that any expenditures associated with leasing or any capital, any required modifications to the property that occur after January 1st, you know, will be at the expense of the Hingham taxpayers. So obviously, and I know the holidays are coming up, but it's in our collective best interest that as much of that, as much of those funds are expended in 2020 so that we can take advantage of some of those CARES Act dollars.
Yeah, and thank you for that. Yeah, I want to applaud Mr. Ferris and his team of looking at what we need to do and to be able to prepare ahead of time. So we do have, we've made some purchases for preparing for the technology, et cetera, that we should be able to use this year under the CARE Act. So they've taken a lot of, you know, care and concern as we prepare to get as much under the December 30th deadline as possible, recognizing that, you know, there's no guarantee after that that it's available. So we knew we needed to strike while the iron is hot. They did a phenomenal job of preparing for that, and I'm very proud of them. So we've done the best we can to get there ahead of time.
Yeah. Joe, any questions for Dr. Austin or the School Department? I know we also have Counsel for the Town John Coughlin on the line who helped draft the license agreement.
So, you know, first, a word of thanks to the Superintendent and the School Committee. This is, these are very unusual times, and you're stepping up, so much appreciated. Could you tell me about the handicap accessibility of this location? Are there issues you anticipate?
Mr. Ferris, you and I toured that, and it was a while ago that I toured that. Can you speak specifically to the handicap? I mean, we have, I know, ground level entrance, but if you can speak to anything on the inside. You're on mute, John, just.
The, so the building does have an elevator that's in working condition, and it is on the ground level. That's a good question, Joe. I can't remember in my head, you know, if there's a ramp that goes up there, or if there's even a curb, or if it's solely on the ground level. But it certainly has an elevator inside, and if it doesn't, we'll make sure that we have a ramp so they can get into the building. So, you know, other than that, it is handicap accessible.
One of the issues that I read about in terms of schools and the pandemic is making sure that there's proper ventilation. Does this location, you think, have the appropriate ventilation that we'll need over the coming months?
Well, I do believe that. I mean, recently, you know, over the past several years or several years ago, they redid the entire heating system. So each room is equipped with actually brand-new windows, which is good, you know, very functional windows, so they'd be able to open. And they all have individual unit vents with working ducts. And, you know, that's one of the checks that we will do when we go there to make sure that everything's operational and functional, to the extent that there's a, the ducts or some of the heating systems not working, that's the responsibility really of the Archdiocese or St. Jerome's to take care of that. So we're sort of prepared to Thursday, no less, you know, grab a key, get in there. We have contractors waiting to get in to do, you know, a bit of asbestos remediation just so we can, you know, have the spaces that we're going to be needed completely safe, as well as, you know, we're going to have a company come in ServiceMaster and do a real deep cleaning of the entire place. And then, you know, Katie Hartman and her staff will get the place ready, similar to the way we got our other schools ready. So, you know, all those things are waiting in the wing. Technology is on order. It's already ordered. You know, we actually do have technology pieces hitting, sitting at the middle school right now to, you know, put in some whiteboards and stuff like that. We did sort of anticipate wanting to get these expenditures in on time before the CARES Act expired.
Yes.
So, you know, by and large, the readying of the building, in my view, right now, I can't think of anything that we forgot where we're going to have to do it after the beginning of the year. So I think all the work will be accomplished, you know, over the next couple of weeks to sort of get the place ready. The last bit of technology during the holiday season, Comcast has a moratorium where they don't do any splicing. And the reason for that basically is we're all sitting home watching TV, so the last thing they want is for the network to go down and all these people to be inconvenienced. So their moratorium gets lifted on January 5th. So we're supposed to be, you know, the splicing for that location is supposed to be taking place immediately right after that. So I'm envisioning at any time, you know, early June, January, we're ready to sort of, you know, start moving into that space.
Yep. I have just one other question. Could someone discuss how transportation will work, how students are going to get there, busing, things like that?
Yep, we will, we did, you know, we entered a lease, so we have a few extra buses that we leased. We leased five extra buses. You know, we're in the process of trying to get drivers, but we do have some subs that can work the drivers. And, you know, we'll, we have to work the schedule. Previously, the School Committee changed policy for elementary to one and a half miles from one mile. So, you know, we'll have the capacity, and what we really need to get at this point is the firm plan on what students are going to be moving and where they're located so that we can get them over there. So I believe I have equipment there, you know, waiting to, you know, execute once we get the full sort of logistical move plan in place. And then we'll work it from there, Joe.
Yeah.
You know, we'll just keep working it.
So has the school organized a new song once they move into the building?
Yeah, but if you have one that you'd like to recommend, Joe.
No new songs, all the old stuff, just the old stuff. I can't do any new songs. I just can't do new songs.
Okay.
I think we should let our Board member who has three children at Foster School be responsible for the school song.
For the musical aspects of it, Joe.
Bill, as a member of the Board, or a parent, I mean, questions that you have regarding this license?
Yeah, well, first of all, ask for the song you've never heard me sing. So there's a lot of pain. Yeah, so a couple of comments and a question. First of all, John Ferris, Dr. Austin, thank you for your hard work here and all the work you've done. Having three children at Foster, I'm well aware of the many challenges of that building. And also, I would note that my mom, for about 25 years, taught at St. Jerome's in Weymouth. So I'm familiar with that building as well, and I think this is a good fit for our needs. Just one question I have, though, is with the school year ending in June of 21, or anticipated ending in June of 21, why are we running the lease to the end of July of 21? Or is that, am I reading that right? Is the lease going to be from, does the lease run to the end of July 31st, 21?
Yeah, it does. That was something I asked for, Bill, because we, I mean, just, you know, with the end of the year coming and stuff, I mean, I think we have to have all hands on deck to prepare to, you know, finish our school year, wherever that might bring us, to whatever date that might bring us. And, you know, if it bumps up against nearing the end of the year, you never know what would happen in snow days. I mean, I know now we're trying to do remote days and stuff, but we'll need time to go in, sort of get our stuff out and make the place right for them. So, you know, that's where the extra month actually comes in.
Okay, understood.
And since it's short term, it's hard to say, oh, how about these days or that days? You know, it's sort of like it's, you had to sort of make it reasonable to say, here's the block of time that we really wanted for.
Makes sense. And I'm not sure, the hard copy I have, I looked over this afternoon just to let the parties know, and Council will need to fix this, it has July of 2020 in the first paragraph, and it noted in paragraph two as a Scribner's error.
We actually have that, I think that was revised, so there's a revised copy, John, that's correct, right?
Yeah, I had sent, it was late, I'm sorry. I picked that, I got a message, somebody else had picked that up too, somewhere like 4 o'clock or, you know, 4:30, and I sent one along to the School Committee and to the Board of Selectmen. We did catch that. So hopefully what we're going to sign, we'll sign the corrected version.
Great, thank you.
Any members of the public have a question or wish to make a comment about this license agreement? And I would also just note that, you know, the reason that the Board of Selectmen is taking this up is that actually under kind of Massachusetts General Law, it's our Board that has the authority to enter into this license agreement. But I would note that our colleagues in the School Committee are meeting tomorrow to also sign this license agreement, because it will really be the School Committee who is responsible for kind of, you know, in conjunction with the School Department, managing the different aspects of this license agreement. So two votes will be taken, and I would accept a motion.
So I move to approve a license agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Boston for temporary use of the former St. Jerome School, subject to approval by the Hingham School Committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Terrific. Dr. Austin, John, Michelle, Carrie, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all your work. These are truly unprecedented times, and the challenges of transporting and educating nearly 4,000 children in these times is just considerable. And we really do appreciate your work in terms of trying to locate space to accelerate the return to in-person learning, but also everything else that you're doing to educate and keep the children of Hingham safe during these times. So thank you again.
Thank you. Certainly on behalf of our School Department, I'm also very appreciative of all the support of the Board of Selectmen. I know that you knew this was coming for us and have been right behind us, and we really truly appreciate that support and the work we're doing, because we are, we're in this together as a town, and we certainly felt it on this. So thank you so much to all of you and to the officials of the town, Tom Mayo, Michelle Montegor, et cetera, for all the support. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, good night. The next item of business on the agenda is the discussion of annual liquor license renewals and fees. This was an item that was on our agenda last week, and just as a way of introduction, the Board actually received some correspondence and some requests from some of our restaurant operators asking whether the Board and the town might be inclined to reduce the annual liquor license renewal fee in light of the pandemic and in light of all of the strain that our restaurants are facing. Thanks to the Selectmen's Office and Sharon Perfetti and Heidi Gaul, we were able to get information about what other towns, particularly nearby towns, were doing with respect to the liquor license renewals and fees. And I'm going to turn it over to Tom Mayo, who I think has a recommendation on behalf of he and Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montegor and Sharon Perfetti, who's in charge of licensing for the Board's consideration for tonight.
Sure. So the gist of the concept is that these restaurants, as you heard me say earlier, with regards to the Vista Verde lease, is that restaurants right now are struggling. So to the extent we can help them get through this time, they are our partners in the community from an economic standpoint, as well as many other ways. I think we're trying to find ways to help restaurants get through this pandemic in, you know, as close to whole process as possible. So to that end, excuse me, I think the recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen consider refunding approximately 50% or 50% of the fees for the annual liquor licenses for all on-premises liquor licenses issued in town.
And Tom, my understanding is that all of the Board, the Town has actually already collected 100% of all these fees over the past several weeks. So this in effect would be that the Town would be returning 50% of those fees.
That's right.
And Tom, could you please speak to the impact this would have on the Town? Because these license fees are actually part of our town revenue. They come in in what we call our local receipts, and, you know, maybe you could just comment on the impact and the considerations for the 50%.
Absolutely, thank you, Mary. So the total that we collect with this fee each year is approximately $80,000. So obviously, 50% of that would be approximately $40,000. I think that it's important for the Town and the Board to remember that the benefits of a functioning restaurant population in town, it goes well beyond that $40,000. There's a larger economic benefit to, that the Town realizes, to having the wonderful restaurants that we have in Hingham. So to me, while it's a $40,000 hit in a year, quite frankly, that revenues are projected to be down, I think from a long-term standpoint that this is the, this would be the right action.
Joe, questions or comments about this proposed renewal?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I know that the restaurants are being hit, and I don't think Massachusetts is quite there yet at totally closing in-person dining. Pennsylvania's there, New York is there, and it's likely coming. But regardless of that restriction, out of abundance of caution, you know, people are not going to the restaurants. Takeout is available, outdoor dining is available. It's going to be tough to do that come winter, come the snowstorm on Thursday. And essentially, the restaurants are being forced to what I would call a temporary either closure or very limited service. And our goal is to make sure that it is just temporary, because these are restaurants that serve our residents, they employ our residents and their kids often, and they are a vibrant aspect of our community. So I think it's appropriate, and I think it's fiscally prudent. I know that some communities have given 100% refund. I think we're doing the fiscally prudent approach to give a 50%, and my hope is that we'll be out of this pandemic as soon as possible.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I would like to say I've spoken with a lot of restaurant owners, and I know how difficult this year has been for them and their concerns for the next couple of months as well, what that's going to look like. Most restaurants, particularly the smaller ones, the alcohol sales is what really drives their business and their revenue. It's not really the food that they serve, it's more about the alcohol issue. So I'm really happy we're doing this. I know that you two probably agree with me, I wish we could give, I wish we can make it 100%. But I'm glad we're doing this to help out, and we know we're partners with our restaurants and trying to help them as much as we can. I know that when I mentioned that this was going to be on the agenda to a couple of restaurant owners, they were very, very, very happy and very appreciative.
Thank you. And I would just add before opening it up to the public that the continued viability of the restaurants is so critical to Hingham in so many different ways. It's part of the vitality of Hingham Square and our other downtown businesses. The meals tax revenue that the Town collects is something that has been an important source of revenue for the Town. And as my colleagues have alluded to, we have, along with our, you know, colleagues on the Advisory Committee and the School Committee, committed to a financial management plan that says that if we fall out of, if we're in a deficit situation, that we would need, that we would all commit to making, you know, significant expense reductions, which in a people-intensive business can sometimes mean people. So I think what we're trying to do is to strike a balance where we can demonstrate demonstrate some visible and tangible support to the businesses while also keeping overall town finances in mind. For me, I think that the first half of 2021 is gonna continue to be challenging for the restaurants. There's good news on the vaccine front, but I, I sort of see this as helping the restaurants through the first six months of 2021 with, with the hope that by, by the end of June, things will have, things will have returned to normal to a certain degree. Are there any members of the public who either have a question or wish to make a comment about the liquor, liquor license renewal fees? Okay, seeing none. The way that our vote list is structured, and Joe and Bill, I know we got a couple of versions of this vote list, so I think we got, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'd like to recognize Tom Hoffman and Tom, if you could please just give your name and address for the record. We'd appreciate it.
No.
Tom, we can't hear you. Yeah, Tom, for some reason, we're showing that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. I'm sorry, Tom.
Mary, you might, maybe Tom, we'll, we'll have the public comment section in a few items from now. Maybe if he calls back in on the phone number that's on the agenda, he could share his thoughts on, in the public comment then, that way.
Or just a thought, if he wanted to send his comments to you, Tom, and you could read them as either an email or something so that, because it's, it's most likely relevant to what we're about to vote on.
Okay.
How's your?
Tom, for some, for some reason, we're still unable to hear you.
Write it on a piece of paper and hold it up and then.
Or if you could, if you could email to Tom Mayo, we actually have to go through a few votes to renew these licenses and then take up the fee question. So to the extent that maybe we can do that while you can send Tom Mayo an email because we would like to, to hear your thoughts. I would accept a, or I guess I'll start out. I would like to make a motion to renew the annual common victular all alcoholic restaurant licenses as presented in the vote list.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Bill?
We can't hear you, Bill, either.
Okay, Mary, aye. Bill, Bill Ramsey, I think we might be having trouble hearing you as well.
Mary, if I can clarify, did you just, was your motion, it wasn't limited to restaurants or was it limited to everything?
This was just the first one. This was the common victular all alcoholic licenses for restaurants.
Restaurants, okay, that's right.
Next, and I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion, Bill, that if, if we can't hear you after this, I might ask you to, to, yep, I think I just heard you, so I think you're good. I would accept a motion for the common victular all alcoholic club licenses.
Did you make the motion, Mary? You were asking for a motion?
No, but I'll make it, I'll, I'll make a motion to renew the annual common victular all alcoholic club licenses as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, if one of you would maybe make a motion with respect to the common victular wines and malt beverages restaurant licenses.
I'd make a motion to renew the common victular wines and malt beverages restaurant licenses as presented in the vote list.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And we have one license for common victular wines and malt beverages for a club.
So I'll move to approve the common victular wines and malt beverages club on the list as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the, the motion for the fees for the licenses that we just adopted. Tom Mayo, did, I saw that you were on the phone. Were you able to capture Mr. Hoffman's feedback?
I was. He wanted, he wanted me to pass along his thoughts that that we should, the Board of Selectmen should consider at least 50% and to keep the door open to consider more as things evolve. That was his comment.
Now, I, I think we can, I think we can always consider that as, as time goes on. We're, we're actually returning money right now, so I, I, I don't think tonight's vote would preclude the board from taking that action should the board wish to at that time. Would, would that be correct, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So with that in mind, would one of my colleagues like to make a motion with respect to the fees?
Sure. I'll move that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor of Massachusetts on March 10, 2020, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, hereby vote to reduce the annual license fee for all licenses issued under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, by 50% for all license renewal applications approved in December 2020 for calendar year 2021.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye. And for anyone who is on the line, or, and I know we also have the press here, the Board of, the, the town of Hingham actually will issue these refunds. So we have a list of all of the renewals, so we will take care of that. So there will be no action required on the part of, of the license holders to request a refund. We will be taking care of that.
Please.
If I can just add, just to be clear, so this, this applies to licenses issued under Section 12. And those are licenses authorizing the sale of beverages to be drunk on premises.
Correct.
So that's, that's what this is limited to.
That's correct. We will now take up, we just have, we have two other votes that for license renewals for retail package stores. And these licenses, these licenses are not subject to that 50% reduction. So I would accept a motion for the renewal, actually, I'll just make the motion, to renew the retail package store all alcoholic beverages licenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye. And if one of you could make the motion for the retail package good wine and malt beverages renewal, please.
I'd make a notion to, a motion to renew the retail package for wines and malt beverages license as, licenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody. The next item of business on the agenda is the discussion of proposed MBTA Hingham Ferry and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Joe Fisher, for an update.
Thank you, Mary. So yesterday, the MBTA's Fiscal and Management Control Board made, had an extended discussion and made the following decisions that directly affect Hingham. First, contrary to what had originally been proposed, which was to terminate all ferry service from Hingham and Hull, that decision or that proposal has been walked back. At this point, the, the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board has voted that the Hingham Hull Ferry will be maintained, but at reduced levels of service, although the specifics of those reductions have not yet been worked out. Unfortunately, the direct ferry service between Hingham and Boston will be entirely suspended at this based on the vote. The service changes are likely to go into effect by late January 2021. And it's my hope that we can attempt to restore at least a portion of the direct ferry service because I think that's very critical to Hingham and our surrounding communities. Second, the Green Bush train will run weekdays until 9:00 PM with no service on the weekends, starting in March of 2021. So again, service will run till 9:00 PM and there'll be no weekend service starting in March of 2021. The exact date has not yet been determined. Also, the commuter rail will be running at a reduced winter schedule, starting in late January 2021. And then finally, the 714 bus service that runs between Pemberton Point in Hull and Station Street here in Hingham will be maintained. It had originally been, was gonna be cut entirely. It will be maintained, but again, that will be at reduced service levels with those reductions starting in March of 2021. And finally, the board voted to revisit the ridership issue on March 15th of 2021 to consider whether service levels could be restored. So this was a real testament to the work done by our elected representatives in the state legislature, the state senate, local Boards of Selectmen and town administrators in Hingham and our surrounding communities. We really made a full court press. And really thanks to the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board for listening and willing to consider changes to what initially been proposed. And we are hopeful that further changes in our benefit will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, questions or comments?
Yeah, first of all, Joe, thank you for kind of running point on this for, for our board. I know you put a lot of time in and I thought you did a great job. I'm just so happy that the T kind of listens to everybody. I know we had a lot of comments come in from, from our constituents in our community. And, you know, I know this, we would have loved to have kept full service, but if you look at what, what the alternative was, the alternative was we were gonna lose the ferry now and possibly would have been forever. This is a really positive development. So I was really happy to get that news yesterday.
Yeah. I would, I would echo my thanks, Joe. This was a very time-consuming effort. It was a lot going on in a very quick period of time. And your representation of advocate, and advocacy for the town and for the citizens on the South Shore was, was tremendous. We got a, and we got an email yesterday from David Al Schuler, who is the Towns Representative to the MBTA Advisory Board, who was also very involved in this, and we appreciate Mr. Al Schuler's role. But I just want to read something that he said. At the end of his email, he said, "Our state reps and state senator were particularly active and effective in organizing their districts." He said, he then goes on to say, "This was a more organized bipartisan multi-town lobbying effort than I have ever witnessed in my 48 years in the town." So just, I, I would add and express my gratitude, Tom, Michelle, our colleagues in neighboring communities, our state senator, our state representatives. And, and also, you know, I, I appreciate that Secretary Pollock invested a lot of time to listen to, 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 to just listen to people, which was helpful. Are there any?
I could just.
Joe, please.
Just, just add to that, a thanks to the townspeople from Hingham and our surrounding communities that showed up at these meetings. And they made a comment that they have, there has never been a, a public meeting with greater attendance than the one for the South Shore dealing with these cuts or the proposed cuts. It was, they were overwhelmed by the outpouring of concern and opinions that were voiced by Hingham residents and other residents. So you all made a difference. Thank you.
Absolutely. Tom, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have a question or wish to make a comment about the MBTA service reductions? Okay, seeing none?
Mary, this is Tom. You asked me if I had any comments. I would just state the obvious that as usual, Joe is being very humble. He put a lot of hours and a lot of work into this. I know because I, I saw it, you know, the emails, the, the constant attendance at meetings. So anyway, he, he really did just, he's being humble as usual.
Absolutely. I, I think, I remember there was like a 10 o'clock meeting and, and I remember like at about 2 o'clock pinging Tom and saying, "Hey, um, you know, did, did we hear anything from the meeting?" And he's like, "Yeah, it's still going on. Joe's, Joe's, Joe's still at the meeting."
He's still in there.
There were, there were, there were a lot of things, but it, it's nice to see when government works as we all want it to. Where the decision-makers take their responsibility seriously with citizen engagement and constructive discussion about how to, how to deal with challenges we're facing.
Right.
The next item of business on the agenda is the process to hire a permanent police chief. Tom, I'm gonna turn this over to you. I believe that you have a, a recommendation to put forward to the board.
I do. You know, this is one of the most important things many of you will do in your tenures on a Board of Selectmen. The chief of police is one of the most, if not the most important position in town. These are the people that are entrusted with our, with our public safety and welfare. And the chief is the leader of that department. So this is a very important hire. To that end, I've given it some thought. I've written out a bunch of, a bunch of ideas on what I believe would be a good process to follow. And I, I'll put that together or I'll read it for your consideration, if you don't mind. Okay. So again, the police chief hiring process, this is my recommendation to the board. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen consider the following process in general schedule for the hiring of a new police chief to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of longtime fire, uh, police chief Glenn Olson. So the process would be recommended as follows. Two, one, to issue an internal posting for the position. This internal posting will open, will be open to any existing qualified Town of Hingham employee. I recommend that this posting be issued on Wednesday, December 16th, tomorrow, and to close two weeks later on Wednesday, December 30th, 2020. Two, the Town Administrator's Office would compile all submittals and distribute all applications received to the board on December 31st, so one day later, since after the closing, 2020, so that the board can begin their review of the applicants. Three, then we would at, at that point initiate an assessment interview process for each candidate to be performed by existing police chiefs. The purpose of this interview is to give the Selectmen the insight of professionals in the field. I recommend that the board allow the Town Administrator to select the panel of chiefs to perform the interviews. The assessment interview panel would be asked to provide a written assessment of each chief candidate. Depending on the availability of the selected chiefs, I would anticipate these interviews occurring in early January. Four, following the receipt of the assessment interviews, I would recommend that a public interview be scheduled for each chief candidate at a Selectmen's meeting in mid, mid to late January. The Selectmen should prepare questions for the chief candidates that may include questions received from the public. To that end, I recommend that the board issue a request for interview questions from the general public tonight. These questions should be sent into the Town Administrator's Office and be received through the close of business on January 8th. If a qualified candidate emerges, the Board of Selectmen would make an, or should make an appointment of a new police chief after review of all the material. Depending on scheduling, this appointment is likely to be made in late January or early February. So that's my recommended process.
Okay, I'm gonna first open this up to my colleagues for questions and comments. Joe?
Yes, so Tom, thank you for really putting a lot of time, effort, and thought to figuring out the best way to proceed. So I'm gonna go to a couple of your, your points. The first one is opening it up on the 16th and closing it two weeks later. Could you comment? Is, is that typical for how long these postings would typically be open?
Yes, mo- almost all of our internal postings are two-week postings. If we're going to seek If we're going to seek a candidate externally, we might post for a longer period. But with an internal posting, I would recommend a two week period.
Yep. On point four, you mentioned that the public could be sending in interview questions to you. Is there a designated email that you want them to use? Or how do you want those questions communicated?
Yes, the, the wise guy in me almost read off Michelle's email, but I won't do that to her.
What I'm saying. It may be that you may have I T set up a special email for this that we can disseminate. Tomorrow or post, post this evening so that it's not, you know.
That's a great idea, Joe. I don't know what we want that email to be. I can, it will be set up in the morning, whatever we choose, whatever you guys think is. The most obvious email address. Chief, chief, chief questions, police chief questions, I don't know, something like that. At Hingham-dash-a-ma.gov.
A dedicated, a dedicated email address so that the questions can go there.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll publish that tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think that makes, that makes the most sense. And then finally. I mean, right now we have an interim chief. I did not read any of this as a reflection. On your view about the interim chief's performance. Is, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I, I would expect that Intern Chief Jones would be a candidate. But, you know, we'll follow a process and, and hire the candidate that emerges through the process. But Intern Chief Jones has done a fantastic job in my eyes since the beginning, since his appointment.
So no one should read between the lines and think that, that there's any message here that we're not satisfied or that you're not satisfied. With the current performance of the interim chief.
Absolutely not. On the contrary, I think he's a, he has shown himself to be a, a real professional throughout this entire process. In a very difficult situation, not many people have to take over, you know, the top role in, in the department in an unexpected manner during a pandemic. So. You know, it's a, it was certainly a, a difficult, difficult task he's been performing. I would say that the, this process is intended to give the, the winning candidate the confidence of the town. This is a, this is a, a process that will. That will allow the board of selectmen to fully vet the candidates. And the candidate that emerges will be, will be, will be, or should enjoy the confidence of the community as a result.
I, I don't have any que- any questions. I really do appreciate, though, you're putting in the assessment interview panel with the regional chiefs. I think that will give. An additional perspective that I will appreciate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, questions, comments?
Yeah, a couple of them. First of all, Tom, good, good, good job brainstorming, putting this process together. What I'd ask you, Tom, if you could get this information out to the public. About the process, particularly the, the, the email address to send. Questions or comments to, so that the public knows about it. I mean, we can do it through our town Facebook page or an email or whatever you think is the best course of action. But I'd like to see public dissemination of that. My first point. Secondly. I, I like the suggestion that we're gonna kind of partner here with the community. And we're going to open it up to community questions and input. I think that's a, the way to proceed. And Hingham, Hingham has a long and wonderful history of community policing efforts. And I think this is just going to be another piece to that. Piece to that puzzle that we put together over the years. And lastly. I, I'd like the suggestion of opening it up to internal candidates. I, I know very well, many members of the department. I've grown up with them. Grown up with a lot of the leadership. I've worked. When I was in the district attorney's office, I, I worked with a lot of the leadership that we see in the police department. We have tremendous leadership. Throughout our ranks. And I'm looking forward to this process and looking forward to. You know, choosing the new leadership of our police department.
Great.
I think I'm gonna. Hold off on making any comments myself until. I just want to open it up. I know we have a number of people on tonight. I think many of you are here for this agenda item. And welcome and thank you for being here. I, I would at this point open it up to members of the public who have. Questions or comments about the process. And again, remember what we're talking about right now. Is just the process for the selection of a permanent police chief. So if anyone has any questions or comments, could you please use the raised hand function? Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing any. I would, I would echo my colleagues. Thanks, Tom, for, you know, thinking through a process. The process that you've outlined here. There are aspects of it that remind me of some of our recent searches, whether it was for a superintendent. The process for hiring the town administrator. And I would echo what Bill said, which is that. An important part to me in this is that there be an opportunity for the public to provide input. And for the pub, and, and our thought is that the public would provide input through. Questions that would be forwarded to, to our board. For discussion during a public interview. I would just remind people that with all of our police department. Interviews, those are all done in a public setting. And I know for me. I will be very interested in what, in topics that members of the community want to bring up. And, and. So, so that's going to be an important piece. I also like the fact that, that there will be an assessment interview. Because I think that that will also give us a sense. Of the sort of technical capability and qualifications of candidates. And I think that that will help. That'll also be an important. An important data point. Tom, I note that in, in the recommended process that you're suggesting. That we begin, that we have an internal process. I also note that in item five, it says if a qualified candidate emerges. The board of selectmen will make an appointment of a new police chief after review of all the material. What I take that to mean is that in the. You know, should, should it. Should that not be the case, the town and the board would be prepared. To. Continue a search until we find. A qualified candidate. Would that, would that be a fair kind of characterization?
Yeah, I think that's right. That we, we need to, we want to make sure that the town has, has a, has the most qualified chief. And I'm recommending an internal search because I think that there's a chance that that exists internally. And then we would follow the process beyond that if necessary. Yep.
Yeah, and, and that, I think that makes sense to me as well. I agree with my colleagues, but I would also point out to the public that. Just as we do for all key positions in this town. We have, we have certain qualifications that we're looking for. And, and we will continue to. Search until we find the candidate that had, that, that has those qualifications. Okay. Tom, anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay. So tomorrow, it sounds like the posting will occur tomorrow. That a dedicated email for. For public interview questions will be established and that. We will get the word out. Tom, I also agree with Bill that I think this, publicizing this recommended process. Will be very helpful. Again, I, I want this to be a really transparent process and I think that'll go a long way towards doing that.
So Mary, I just had an epiphany. Perhaps the, the email address could be, I don't know, something like chiefquestions@hingham, Hingham, M A, Hingham-dash-a-ma.gov. As perhaps was suggested by Selectman Fisher.
Okay.
So we, we will post that, that dedicated email directly with all of this tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
The next item of business on the agenda is the COVID nineteen update.
I just have to pull that one up. One sec. Okay, are we ready? Mary, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So as of yesterday, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is reporting two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-six. Total confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts, of which eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three are in Plymouth County. As of Friday, Hingham remains in the state's yellow COVID nineteen category with six hundred and twenty-two total cases. Compared to five hundred and four total cases two weeks ago. Our average daily incidence rate is thirty-one point two four per hundred thousand people over the prior fourteen days. Again, compared to sixteen point seven two weeks ago. That was thirty-one point two four now. Compared to sixteen point seven two weeks ago. These are huge increases and Hingham case numbers continue to rise. Our health department is seeing a twenty-eight to thirty-four percent weekly increase in cases over the last month. We're also seeing a steady and concerning increase in COVID nineteen hospitalizations across the state. I can't stress continued vigilance enough. The virus is spreading rapidly as we head into the holiday season and winter. Please, for the sake of yourself, your family and your community. Rethink any travel plans or gatherings you had planned for the coming weeks. COVID nineteen spreads easily and can be fatal. There is. A light at the end of the tunnel as vaccine distribution in the U S began this week. The town has formed a vaccine planning group as part of our COVID nineteen incident management team. To coordinate vaccine rollout logistics for the town. We'll share more information as it becomes available over the coming weeks. As we announced previously, we have a new COVID nineteen testing resource in town. The town has partnered with Empathy LLC to open a COVID nineteen testing site at three oh eight Cushing Street. The testing site is open Mondays through Saturdays from seven A M to four P M with the first three hours, seven A M to ten A M. Reserved for town of Hingham residents and employees. Please note that the testing site will be closed this Thursday, December seventeenth due to the winter storm. Empathy will notify everyone who has scheduled appointments for Thursday via email. COVID nineteen testing is available for people of all ages, including children. So please visit empathy.org/schedule. That's the letter M. P A T H Y dot org. Forward slash schedule to make an appointment online, which you can do many days in advance. Test results will be sent to individuals via email with, usually within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Questions about the Hingham COVID nineteen testing site or your test results can be directed. To empathy LLC at info@empathy.org. Again, that's info, info at the letter M. P A T H Y dot O R G. Or at the phone number three, three, nine, two, zero, one, five, five, one, six. Finally, DPH has published some tips to make COVID nineteen isolation and quarantine. Easier for people who have tested positive or have been identified as a close contact. We'll post a link on the town's COVID nineteen update center and on social media for anyone looking for information on how to prepare for isolation or quarantine. And to make sure you have the support you need. Thank you, Mary.
Michelle, anything to add tonight on the COVID nineteen update?
No, Mary, thank you.
Joe, questions or comments on the COVID nineteen update?
Just briefly, Tom, thank you. With respect to the testing site in Hingham. Have we been experiencing traffic issues, backups? I just want to make sure that. The residents who are near that site are, you know, if there are issues that we anticipate or deal with them.
Great. Thank you for the question, Joe. No, we were concerned with that. Obviously, this is a popular facility. I believe that our appointment scheduling process has allowed us to avoid those problems on Cushing Street. And we have not seen any traffic backups onto Cushing Street. And we do have regular police details at the site.
How, how well attended has the site been? Or is it regularly being used?
Yes, yep. So we're, we're getting upwards of a hundred and fifty or more tests done daily.
Yep. Thank you. No other questions.
Bill?
That, you know, a lot of good news. Past couple of weeks with the vaccine, you know, finally arriving and being distributed. But we still got a long way to go, folks. Hope everybody stays vigilant. Holidays are coming up, but we're not out of the woods yet, but it certainly is a lot to be optimistic about going forward. The beginning of the end, hopefully, with everything we've been dealing with as a, as a community.
Any members of the public have a question or wish to make a comment with respect to the COVID nineteen update? Okay, seeing none. The next item of business on the agenda is public comment. The board of selectmen is set aside up to fifteen minutes. For public comment. Speakers are offered the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. We ask that, that all comments be directed to the chair. And that they be delivered in a constructive way. This is not a time for the board of selectmen to engage in discussion. And the board of selectmen does not necessarily endorse any of the views expressed during public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to be recognized to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. I believe we have appointments to. The best committee I ever served on and Bill and Joe, no disrespect, but. I served on the Fourth of July Parade Committee and it is the best because everybody loves the parade. It's not controversial. It's a great group of folks and. We have the opportunity tonight to reappoint. Members of this committee with the sincere hope that. The Fourth of July Parade will be able to go on. This year and. So I'd, I'd entertain a motion for reappointments if one of my colleagues wishes to make them.
Happy to make the motion before I do so. Mary, you may forget you and I served on that committee together many, many years ago.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann Blackmer was the chair. Remember that? Those good days. Okay, I'd make a motion to reappoint the following members to the Fourth of July Parade Committee for a term ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Jim Murphy, George Ford. Coach Tom Hoffman. Monica Cunningham. Gabrielle Rogner, Dwight Delauter, H P D Chief David Jones. H F D Deputy Chief Lou, Louis Le Chance. Heather Johnson. Erin McGowdy. Danielle Monseignor, Jeff Lally. Louis O'Day, Jack Dean, Cassie McDermott, Mary Ellen Carlisle and Brian Apple.
I'll second that motion. I wish I had a July fourth hat I could be wearing while I seconded, but it's seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Our thanks, our thanks to the committee. We know that your planning efforts are, have already begun and. This, that, that has the potential to be a really great celebration in Hingham for a lot of reasons. So something for us all to look forward to. Let's see. I don't think, I think I've gotten everything on the vote list. Selectmen and town administrator reports. Tom, anything else to add?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Michelle?
I do have one. Since we're expecting a winter storm on Thursday, I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of, of the town's plans in terms of the status of our municipal facilities. So due to the winter storm, municipal offices will be closed on Thursday, December seventeenth. With employees working remotely. In large part, a lot of our facilities are still closed to the public, but we want to let people know that we won't physically be here, but we will be working remotely. So, and then a couple of department specific updates. The senior center, their remote programs will still take place as scheduled unless otherwise notified. Hingham Public Library, the trustees will be meeting tomorrow to determine what's going to be happening there on Thursday. So they will be updating their website with that information tomorrow. The Recreation Department, their remote programs will also take place as scheduled unless otherwise notified. South Shore Country Club will be closed, but the Greenside Grill at the country club, the restaurant there will remain open. And then finally, the transfer station will remain open, but these. And then finally, the transfer station will remain open, but these plans could change. If we have any changes to them, we'll post them on the town website. And we do also ask members of the community to please stay off the roads on Thursday unless it's necessary to travel so that our Public Works crews can safely clear them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mary, I had one quick comment on Michelle's report. One, one additional casualty of the COVID nineteen pandemic, I think, might be the end of the snow day as we know it because we are so able now to work from home remotely. I'm not sure the snow day is gonna be a thing. It might become a thing of the past, anyway.
Yes, I, we, I know our household got that letter, and I have a Hingham Public School student who was informed that school will will go on on Thursday. Joe?
That's so.
Anything to report?
That's so unfair that the students cannot get a snow day. I mean, I just remember looking forward to that. But no, just really, happy holidays and stay safe. Thank you.
Bill?
My three kids are gonna file a grievance over the snow day as well. Hey, I just wrote two things real quick. First of all, Bar Night on Chronicle at seven thirty, the Hingham Heritage Regent will be featured as well as Peter Hershey's farm with the history of the toy manufacturing facility that was there over time. And secondly, there was a very dangerous fire today in Hingham. And I want to just applaud the work of our fire department, our police department, our the Weir River Water Company, and all those who assisted in and in that effort today.
Yeah. I had a couple of things. As the liaison, I'm the liaison to the Cable Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to let the public know that the Cable Advisory Committee has issued a survey that is located on the town website. It's ten questions. It's very quick to respond. But the, this will help inform the upcoming negotiations that the Cable Committee will have with Harbor Media with respect to programming and other things. Secondly, I've, I just want to thank many of our partners, including Hingham Light and some of the schools for organizing a lot of food drives to be held right now. You may have seen on the national news that food banks are seeing record demand for their services. And the Hingham Food Pantry has also seen a significant increase in requests to support our friends and neighbors. So we appreciate people's generosity with that. I have kind of two water updates. I spent some time working through the the water, the water system budget that we will all review in January with Superintendent Tierney. I also, myself and John Asher, who was the former Chair of the Water Acquisition Study Committee, participated in a kickoff meeting yesterday for the cost of service study. And that's the study that's going to inform future water rates. And the town just continues to be grateful for dedicated volunteers like John Asher, who just continue to serve the town in so many different ways. The other water update is that last Wednesday Superintendent Russ Tierney and I were guests at the Weir River Watershed Annual Meeting. We appreciated the invitation. It was, it was a great meeting, and we look forward to really cultivating a stronger relationship with the Weir River Watershed as as we work together to determine how to provide an essential service to ratepayers, but also be good stewards of the environment. And I think there's a lot of shared goals there, and we look forward to a lot of, a lot of great cooperation. And then lastly, I see that we have some of our school committee colleagues on the phone. I'm gonna sort of leave you with with something, which is that we're gonna get some good news this week. Some good news on the school front, but I'm not gonna steal anybody's, I'm not gonna steal the school committee's thunder. But there's some good news on the horizon that I think we'll all be hearing about. So stay tuned. Our board is actually scheduled to meet next Tuesday, December twenty-second. We anticipate that that will be our final meeting of the of the calendar year. And we will meet at seven. And I believe that that is scheduled to be a a portion of that is most likely going to be a joint meeting with our advisory committee colleagues and our school committee colleagues. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen PM.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye.